All right, so now watch what you say. Um, Commissioner's meeting Wednesday, May first. May first, May Day.
Yeah, wow.
When I was a kid, my mother would make us uh, styrofoam cups, we'd fill them up with dirt for flowers in them. And then we'd go around early in the morning, first thing in the morning and leave them on the uh, knock on the door and then leave them right at the step where um, people that live in that community. That was May, our May Day thing.
Sweet.
Yeah. All right, uh, I reverse. Sure. Uh, starting off with public comments, Dean, we're gonna move on to elected officials and department updates. I'll start with Doug. Do you have anything? You are muted.
No, no, sorry. Other than rescheduling that meeting when we get, we can do that later with the calendar.
Okay.
So, nothing else.
Thank you. Ken, do you have anything this morning?
I do. I uh, need to request a non-FMLA leave of absence for one of our new uh, Sheriff's Department employees. Um, when we brought him on board last month, we did so knowing that um, he was gonna be taking two weeks off for the birth of a child. Um, and we are now, the baby's due any day now, and he would be looking to just take um, two weeks off without pay.
No, moving.
Devin.
Okay.
Mr. Wasman.
Hi.
Mr. England.
Hi.
And Mr. Flowers.
Thank you.
Yep. Chief, you wanna give an update and um, give uh, the commissioner some insight on things that are going on down at EMS?
Certainly. So, it's been a fairly productive uh, we got us here last week, or two weeks ago. We met with a couple of the different chiefs from Walpole and Winchester over just starting a conversation with them and getting a better relationship with them. Uh, I also sat down yesterday with the new King Fire Chief, uh, just yeah, Jason Martin. Very nice gentleman, uh, soft spoken, very eager to continue the relationship that's already started and.
Hopefully will. Is he the interim or is he?
Yes. He's the officer in charge of the second.
They haven't put it. They put out a search.
Now, I do not know.
My understanding is that they are looking at a search.
All right. Oh, that's all right. Um, but it's a very good meeting. It was uh, myself, my two deputies and uh, Jason. It was, we were looking really to solidify our relationship and start leading more by example throughout, for the rest of the county of saying, hey, King and Cheshire are working together. We should all kinda come together and work towards the common goal of taking care of patients. Started a conversation of what assets the county has or what King has as far as large scale incidents and what we can bring together to uh, solidify and respond to those type of uh, calls. So, with that, and we just kinda went over what we do when King gets a fire, a structured fire or goes to code one. Just kinda rehashed all that, but it was a very good, productive meeting and we're both eager to continue a positive relationship. Uh, we've also been extremely busy on the community relations side. We've, and I'm gonna turn it over to our community liaison Sarah here in a moment.
Ah, Sarah.
Fill you in.
We've had it, but we haven't met.
No, we haven't met.
We uh, we went to the West Millen Open House of their new fire station uh, week and a half ago. We're also at Auntie T's up on uh, Route Nine, a little food trailer, Smash Burgers, I hear they're delicious.
Where, where is it?
Route Nine in Stoddard. It's a little food trailer, kinda tucked away if you're coming.
Oh, on the left.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so she's a very active person as far as uh, supporting first responders. And I happen to get my coffee there in the morning usually on my way in and started a conversation with her and she asked us to come by at her opening. And that was like one evening first and she happened. Uh, always Sarah gets her coffee there too, so.
So she always followed up the thing.
Which is great. But at that point, I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah because she has far more numbers and knowledge on what we've been doing with the community outreach, part of the CMS grant that was awarded us uh, at the beginning to have this education for the community.
So I've kind of picked the ball up more firmly per se in the last two months. Um, sorry, I have to put my glasses on. Uh, so to give you an idea, we, so my, what I've been focusing on is making contacts in the community for a couple of different reasons. One is to build relationships in the town via contracts with the other ones we don't have contracts with, um, just to get our name out there, shake hands. Have good relationships. And the second is to offer the trainings that we can for free while we have this grant. Um, the goal of that grant is to get as many EMS folks in the community trained as possible. Um, and also to provide opioid, opioid overdose and Narcan training. So that's been our biggest focus. There's also a side part to that of focusing on kind of create, softly creating a continuum of care type relationship with social service agencies in the county. Um, as I'm also an EMT, um, so as an EMT, I've worked with folks in the community that don't really need the ER, they don't really need our ambulance, but they need help. And I'm trying to figure out how to build those relationships so we can pick up the phone and say, hey, can you come in on this one? Um, which I think is very, very important.
And that's language. The continuum of care language is something we ought to try to weave into a lot of our documents as we.
I use it everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good word. Yeah.
Well, particularly in terms of funding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or tonight, I stand in front of uh, two, fifty to two hundred chiefs and we'll talk about at the Southwest Mutual Aid uh, annual meeting.
So with that in mind, I'll spin off a little bit. So I have, so aside from some chiefs um, like Phyllis Manning and Marlboro, her and I have created a good friendship. She's interested in um, helping with the Narcan distribution. She already reaches out to chiefs already. Um, so she's been a good supporter of mine. I'm new to EMS, I was of a year and a half ago, so she's also been very helpful kind of mentor on me.
You couldn't have a better individual to look up with than Phyllis. She's a great lady.
She is. She used to teach EMT classes and.
She's on me.
She's um, C two for, for Marlboro. So Mobile Crisis Unit, um, and Anak Family Services. I have been trying to get in touch with Caitlin, but she's gonna be key. Um, I had an experience at a gas station where I picked up a young man, I think he was twenty-four, slightly autistic. Again, didn't need the ED, didn't need the expensive ambulance ride. He just needed somebody in the minute moment to kinda help de-escalate him and get him back on his feet a little bit. Um, so I feel like we might uh, be utilizing them in the future. Manakumay Society has a safety net program. Sometimes if we go to houses and people say, yep, I'm having a heart attack, but I'm not leaving my dog. We can't make him come with us. Uh, but the safety net program can figure out how to get that dog to Manakumay Society and then we can transport the person or depending on how that time works. Um, John Lutendre, if I'm saying that right, Chesham Medical Center. Um, he handles, he's on a block grant um, and distributes Narcan, also does Narcan trainings. He's put Narcan kind of access boxes around town. Um, I'm talking to him. Something else we're talking about is becoming a Narcan giveaway station or helping fire stations become giveaway stations. So he's going to help um, potentially provide me with bulk Narcan for that.
They, they aren't attended or?
No, it would, it would be attended, yes. And so um, like I was talking to Phyllis, she said they're not open all the time, but when they are, you know, somebody could knock on the door and ask for Narcan. Um, I think having it in the towns itself would be helpful because fire stations tend to be in the center of town. Um, it's gonna be easy to find. It's just another reason.
They sort of stand alone or are they, they stationed in places that are already open to something else?
Oh, the boxes that are already out there?
Well, I mean, one of these stations could, you'd have to be just a, you know, an official standalone uh, Cheshire place or, or could you like utilize, you know, a store or, or a business or something that's open all over?
I think it's all of those, depends on where you are.
It really depends on the community and what they want. I know we have Narcan here in the county building. So, what we're finding is, and most communities and states are doing this more and more of, and New Hampshire has what's called Leave Behind Narcan Protocol. So the first responders can leave Narcan for a patient that they have come in contact with if they feel that it's going to be needed or used again. And it's, it really is a s- a life-saving medication, as we've all heard the news and such. And it, it needs to be out there as this epidemic continues.
Sort of in the moment kind of thing.
Yes.
It is. Doesn't have hours, you know?
Right. No, no.
So is Narcan available for free? And if, if so, who pays for it?
So, I, my understanding, there's the Gateways Doorway?
Doorway.
Doorway.
At Cheshire Medical, um, that does supply free Narcan to folks. So on the other end of that, I don't know, but I'm just um, like the gentleman at Cheshire Medical, it's a grant that he gets it through.
You can get it, I think, at any pharmacy. You don't even need a prescription or, I'm not sure if you have to pay for it, you probably have to pay for it.
Well, I think.
I don't know if it's free.
How much is a question, you know?
I've heard recently up around fifty dollars.
Yeah, we bought a case of.
Which is a lot for many people.
It is. Oh, absolutely. Which is why you have a lot of the grant funding, uh, both federal and state to help co- combat the opioid.
And is all of the Narcan now available by nasal spray?
Yes.
Yeah, the pre-mix nasal.
Okay. So it doesn't have to be injected anymore?
No.
And, and you gotta understand that we have Narcan right outside this room.
Where is it located?
Right next to the AED.
Oh, okay.
Right underneath your pitcher. Just in case. If you see this person.
So to continue the list, we have Laura Brow from Healthcare Hospice and Community Services. She's actually coming in and already doing the training for her folks on the sixteenth. Um, so I'm going to sit with her and get more information and try and just build a structure of, I'm in the field with a patient, I run into this situation. Another one, I can tell you, we had a gentleman that had dementia. His eighty-six-year-old wife was taking care of him. He kept falling. We kept going and picking him up, putting him back in his chair. She was waiting on VA help and she was waiting, she was waiting, she was waiting, wanting to get him into a nursing home. He ended up falling this last time uh, and hurt a great deal and died. That didn't need to happen. Um, if there was a step in between to help her, cause when you're, you know, under stress, eighty-six years old, lots of misinformation, trying to set something up for this person that you love and you're kind of panicked about, your cognition isn't what it could or should be. Um, and I just feel like there should have been steps in between to help this this lady. So Southwest Community Services, I haven't reached out to them. You know, they're the big umbrella of shelter, food, financial help. And I believe they do have immediate services. Uh, because another situation I was in, I actually hooked up with Janine at Maplewood. Um, and we're gonna sit down and talk sometime about what resources she uses when she gets calls when people are in crisis. So that's kind of that portion.
So to kind of follow along with that, over my career in EMS, we've, I've certainly noticed that when people are at their wit's end or don't know what else to do, they call nine-one-one. It's educated throughout the country of if it's an emergency, call nine-one-one. Now, the definition of an emergency is different to each one of us. So, but what we find is when we arrive on scene, we have to decipher what's going on, you know, is it a medical emergency? Is it a traumatic event or whatever? But a lot of it is a mental health-related concern or the family just doesn't know what else to do. So, instead of potentially tying up an ambulance resource for an hour, hour and a half, trying to figure this out of what to do, because like Sarah was saying, sometimes it's not at the level of going to the ER. But EMS, we're kind of limited in that either we get a refusal for a patient who is completely competent and understands the situation, or we take them to the hospital. Then we're burdening the ER with more patients, more beds, and with the legislation that's just recently passed and conquered of you have X amount of time, once you hit the ER, for a psychiatric patient to be placed in a inpatient facility. That burden is dominoing down onto the ambulances to move these patients even more quickly and effectively. So, if we can have a kind of an umbrella or a coordinator to say, no, call this number, they can get a crisis team out. And that's where uh, Caitlin from was at Manakumay.
The Mobile Crisis.
Mobile Crisis Unit. She reached out to me a few months ago, look, saying, hey, we wanna get a, a team together to actually go out into the communities and respond to these mental health calls. I looped in Dr. Sozzi from Cheshire Medical Center and he is definitely on board with it. Cause again, it takes the burden off of the hospitals, which we all know they're overcrowded as it is. So bringing this all together and having some sort of basically hotline to call instead of relying on the hospital or relying on our own judgment or Google search is gonna be key in the future to provide um, again, a much better continuum of care throughout the count.
Have we uh, Charlotte, have we contemplated trying to bill for no transport?
Or no, no.
Not, not, not transport.
No transfer.
Captures.
So we've, we've had that discussion.
Are you talking about through our, for a nine-one-one?
We're unable to currently because of the reimbursement laws from Medicare, Medicaid and the, and the insurance companies follow suit. We only can bill for loaded miles. That's what triggers the.
Well, so I don't get involved in what gets billed out. This all is what's in temp system, what gets passed on to the billing company. It was my understanding that just something recently is, is being contemplated to allow for no.
Yeah, there's, there's legislation pending to allow billing for no transport on a, on a more structured basis. It is possible to do it now from Medicare. What about just a patient? But the, the, the problem typically is that because you don't transport, you don't get the billing information. But if the hospital, if they're in the system at the hospital, it's, it's probably a conversation to have with our billing company. There's our circumstances where they're, you can currently get reimbursed for no transport. The problem is it's, it's a little more paperwork, cause you still have to go to the hospital, get the, get the, the sheet from the hospital in order to bill in the same way that we do when we transport.
Yes.
Cause we don't walk out without the, without all that, that information.
So you're saying Medicare, yes, Medicaid, no?
Um, I, I'd have to refresh my record, but I think, I think Medicaid will pay for no transport.
You mean Medicaid?
Yeah.
I, I was under.
I think that's certain situations though, it's very limited, isn't it?
But i- it's, I just don't want us to miss that opportunity because we do a lot of.
Oh, we sell much that doesn't.
And, and that's, that's why this legislation in Congress is key to get it passed because.
And the hospital has information on about that, most of the people, because they're frequent flyers.
But so, and that's why I was gonna ask you is if they didn't get transported, how, how will we?
We'd have to get the information from the patient.
And, right, because I don't think the public can share that information with us. I.
It's a gray area.
If they never got transported to them and there was never that connection, I don't think.
How would they know that we?
Well.
Yeah, but we'd not allow them to.
Cause they're gonna sign the back of the form that authorizes or releases the information.
But that's only if the transport happened and they got transported to them. If there was never any connection to the transport.
Probably a conversation to have.
Yeah. And, and I mean, maybe that's something that, I don't know what, obviously we'll figure out what we're talking about.
Because when you have, you know, thirty, forty percent of our runs that are no transport, we've gotta try to see what the opportunities are. Because, I mean, certainly at a legislative level, people are more attuned to it now than they have ever been. But, but I've been hearing it in the background for the last two years, that there are circumstances where you can bill for no transport, assuming you, you can get the billing information. But.
I would, I would, yeah.
I would also, I would also wanna know.
Henry could answer the question.
Yeah.
The moment is not retired.
Yeah, I would, I, I think, you know, Henry Lipman, who is the Deputy Commissioner for Department of Health and Human Services, who oversees Medicaid and Medicare billing, um, and all, all issues pertaining to those, um, may have some insight into it too. But I would love to know more about it so that if I have an opportunity to sit with our senators or congresspeople, that I can bring this forward because they're the ones that can put pressure on Senator Medicaid Services to make those changes.
You know, when you stabilize a patient at home, whether it's for mental health purposes or any, and you don't have to transfer, you save the government millions and millions of dollars. If there, a lot of these, a lot of these admissions are simply unnecessary, but they're gonna build them, you know that, they have to.
Well, well, here's a crazy.
From CMS, I mean, the internet, this is just Google, but it is CMS dot com. It says ambulance services are covered under Part B Medicare. However, Part B payment for an ambulance service furnished to a Medicare beneficiary is available only if the following conditions are met: actual transportation of the beneficiary occurs, the beneficiary is transported to an appropriate destination. I mean.
Yeah.
I'll have to.
And, yeah, I mean, if there are, I guess, certain ones, I mean, that would really be training that then follows down to the staff to right, realize that they need to capture certain things about these.
Demographics.
I bet you, I bet you, I bet you it's easier for the individual, if, if you, if you had someone's. If you transported a, a therapist out to a scene to de-escalate a situation, I bet you it's easier for them to do a billable service of the situation that just occurred.
Well, under the mobile, under the mobile.
Yeah.
Health, yeah, that's the whole plan.
Yeah.
To, to divert people from EDs.
But we can't.
No.
We transport out there. They, and we're there in case there is, but we can't bill for that. But that's, yeah, that, we got six. Those are, those are little things. As, as this program continues to evolve and some of the points that you brought up, it's, it's just telling us more and more that we need to figure out these little issues that um, are really a hindrance to care. And so, and so I think, and at the same time, balance out what we promised the towns our contracts would look like uh, on the community side. And because, and that's, that's the thing that excites me too, because as the chief knows, it's been something that I've been uh, talking about for a while. We said to these towns, we're gonna be in your town. We're going to offer up Stop the Bleed. We are going to uh, offer up CPR trainings and all that. And we have to follow through that. And what it's showing, it's just even bigger than that. And there may be, they're not maybe, I gotta believe that there are grants out there that we can pursue to build upon this at some point.
And nice segue into the community CPR and Stop the Bleed. So I'll let Sarah continue with.
And in regard to towns that we have touched, you know, that we're offering trainings to just in the last two months. And some are, we don't have contracts with Troy, Nelson, Winchester, Stoddard, Gilson, West Millen, Swansea, Marlboro. Um, and that's a matter of schools, churches, fire departments, camps, community programs, daycares, fundraisers, um, and co-owners. So that's kind of what we've had our hands in just the past two months.
And interact.
Yeah. Yes.
Then, 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 the other ten are, the other ten are coming, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So in those communities, are you in fact offering free CPR AED courses?
Yes, and we add a Narcan portion to that. We're also offering Stop the Bleed courses. Um, Mark can offer ALS trainings. Um, the towns have also been invited to trainings that we get as staff. Um, so there was a I forget the ones that Matt's done, two or three. Swansea has come to them. Um, so we always email all of the towns and say, come on in for our trainings.
How's attendance for them?
Um, those ones, we've just had two or three Swansea folks come. We've had twenty or thirty.
Our CCM EMS employees are in strong attendance. It's uh, getting the towns to understand, hey, we have these trainings, they're open. Come on down. Um, we are working with Gilson to do a class. We helped uh, put out a flyer for them. She, then he put up a uh, they have a few deaf people in their town, so he is bringing interpreters and to make us, help us understand how to work with deaf patients better. And I believe that's middle of May or June fifth, I'm with Gilson at their fire department, so continuing education for you, Jack. Um, if you'd like to attend, but it's.
Do you think at some point it may make sense for us to do some of these trainings that we're doing down here more regional and just say, get a, get a town to sponsor it and then, and then have everybody meet there in that region and then do another one in the region too?
Absolutely. And uh, Deputy Chief Kramer is really starting to push the municipal part of the education. It's, like I said, we had a great conversation with the King Chief yesterday. We have a RSI or Rapid Sequence Intubation Assist Class that all of our providers have gone through online with the state. And we're gonna have a couple of different trainings. King, so that when we call them in to take someone's airway that's still conscious, which is what RSI does or allows us to, our providers will be more of an assistant to King in that process because it is a very methodical, planned-out uh, procedure that we can do, or the King can do rather. So, we're again, building those bonds and those relationships more and more. And as we get out more on the municipal side and the community, people are gonna see that we're here and we're here to help.
Nelson is another good example of that. We did CPR AED Narcan training. Um, turned out they had expired Narcan on a truck, so we gave them some from the supply that we had. But they're also trying to get Stop the Bleed kits throughout their town, at different town buildings and community buildings. Uh, so they're going to come next week. I'm gonna train them on Stop the Bleed. They're gonna become Stop the Bleed destructors. They can then apply for a grant to get those kits. So it's not always just for teaching somebody CPR. Sometimes there's a line that follows that, that helps them get more creative than that.
Do we have? In the town of Nelson, back ten or eleven years ago, someone died from, from a general heart condition. And the family donated two AEDs, one to the town of Nelson, one to Munsonville where we live. And uh, and following that, another person, and my wife and I purchased V-ribolators. The circumference around Granite Lake is exactly three miles. And there's, and there's one which is located at the chapel by the lake, right in the center of town. One at our house and one at Nicoletti's house, each being one mile apart. And for these last ten years, except for two years of COVID, we have sponsored AED classes with the Granite Lake Association paying the tuition, which is fifty dollars per person. Um, and uh, and we have two excellent AED teachers, CPR AED teachers um, from the Keane Family YMCA staff. They're certified people. And what I spent two hours finishing last evening was the preparation for the uh, for the August second, twenty twenty-four course, which is being offered at the chapel by the lake.
Nice. Excellent. Excellent. And is that part of the mapping service so that the community can see where the AEDs are?
Yes, exactly, yes.
They're registered?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Ian.
Good work.
Cause that's another point I wanna bring up.
Is that the dark gent thing?
Yes, so I attended the chief's meeting at Cheshire Medical Center last week as well. And one of Dr. Sozzi's big pushes is. For basically Cheshire County to become a heart safe community, I know Wollpool already is, basically what that means is. Having a certain percentage of the community trained in CPR and AED use. And a process to continue getting people trained. That's where a community outreach, community liaison can come into play even more. Getting into the schools and different clubs and associations of continuing to get people trained in CPR. So we are, there's thirteen pillars that go into having a community be designated heart safe. And we've already got about six or seven of them done throughout the county. Alright, and that's because of how Cheshire Medical Center does their follow-ups. Uh, and as we build, how we can really start doing more and more training. One thing that was brought up was a question. Do the sheriffs have AEDs in their cruisers? And I was told that they do not currently, so I have started, and this happened. A one, a few months ago, I started a conversation with Steve Perrin from Maplewood, the safety coordinator of. What does the county have for AEDs? Well, we've got a mixture of them. However, they're not. Interoperable with what most of the county EMS providers use. Most of the accounting providers all use Seoul products, including us. So if moving in the future, if we all move to Seoul, AEDs which are. Very easy to use, and the great thing about them is they run off the. Uh, C one, two, three batteries, the little stubby batteries, it takes ten of them. And you can go down to Batteries Plus and buy them. Alright, so it's, you don't have to order and say, oh, well, my battery's dead. Try to track down that particular battery for a specific AED, and. Moving forward, I'd like to certainly get the county itself with Maplewood, this building, the sheriffs. All on Seoul, because the other part of it is if it's used by a sheriff's deputy or at the Maplewood, which is how this conversation started. We can. Give them a set of AED pads because they work with our martyrs, and then. They can go ahead and order theirs, since they don't use them as much, we can backfill and kinda make sure that everyone is is set. Until they're able to order a new supply. So that that's another thing that we need to start talking about and looking at for the future, and there are certainly grants available for that.
So say it, say it again. What is it that we'd be looking for to the grants?
So we'd be looking for more AEDs.
Okay.
Throughout the community, specifically with the Sheriff's Department, and we'll talk to Sheriff Rivera about that uh, in the future. But having them all uniform for the interoperability of. We show up on scene, we can get that AED back in service. So pretty much by handing them a set of pads off of our truck.
So the AEDs, how would we then communicate to the towns, we got this grant, to get those out to them to a sites? Like, I think Elsted just did a big AED thing, right?
Yes. And there, I know that yours is coming up as well, cause that was part of the discussion at the hospital. So that has to be a community outreach, that has to be a campaign, I know I've heard on the radio before of. Trying to get more AEDs out of the community, I think uh, the Ford dealership was one of the sponsors, I remember hearing on ninety four. One, I think it is, the radio station. Uh, previously, but getting that knowledge out there, that's really where EMS is. Unique in that people know we're here, but they don't really know what we do, so the more that we can educate, the more that we have that community outreach. And have the understanding, the better off the entire county is gonna be.
So if we have a uh. I can't remember the, what's the, what's a pro- program that you you can have an app that shows you where all the AEDs are?
That it's a state registry?
Yeah.
And I I know what you're talking about, and Dr. Sozzi showed it. You can get them all registered, so literally you pull it up on your phone and.
So, so. If there's recommendations for density, that's how far you have to travel to get an AED. And if we wanted to standardize it, just like we did with some police radios decades ago. We 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 will buy the AEDs for every community, every agency in the county. And we'll offer them, we'll 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 scope out the number of AEDs to accomplish that AED density that you need. Handle all the registration so that you can, so the county helps populate. The entire county with AEDs properly placed. My bet is that, because it would be reasonable, you get a number of state, federal, local grants. To pitch in to do that, and that gets you to your uniformity of equipment and the interoperability.
In in the meantime.
Cause it's a lot of effort to to do that now.
Yes.
But, and you don't wanna be, you gotta be gentle about reaching over the fence, so.
But if. If you, you know, when they they have the next chief's meeting, and we had a plan, an idea of a plan of how to move forward with something like this. And we talked to Jim ahead of time. How much does an AED cost?
About seven hundred dollars, yes.
Okay. So what if, what if you did this?
If you bought a hundred of them, I bet Zol would probably held off with that a little bit.
Yeah. But what if you, I mean, what if you took the, anyway, fund, a portion, I mean, a small. And designated over the next few years, they're putting aside thirty thousand dollars to purchase AEDs. Isn't that what it's there for, for elderly?
We don't get, we get about twenty seven a year, and we've been using the majority of it, so we really only have what we're, I mean. We have what we're getting.
Let's put it this way, you can't spend it twice. I I think there's adequate funding that could be cobbled together to get us where we need to be.
Your chances increase if it's a countywide.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, oh, sure, yeah.
Supposed to hear, hear.
Sure, cause I think Zol would definitely buy in, and they could turn that into marketing, that they sold. Two hundred and fifty AEDs to the county sponsored, populated. And that, so that helps advance the standard placement, the registry, the equipment. Oh, yeah, I think, I think you'd have no problem raising the money.
Continue to push the CPR training certifications to meet that percentage requirement. For the heart safe, and then.
Right.
Once we achieve that, there's signs all over the county when you come in on. On the roads of, yep, we're a heart safe county, instead of a heart safe community.
I I think that would be a slam dunk in terms of. You know, if you spread it out over a half a dozen funding sources, like you have any profit at all getting enough money. To maybe even do more than what you need to do.
Right.
Imagine you could, because then Fenton could have their shuttle. Uh, 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 any dealer could have an AED in their shuttle vans. Yeah, so forth, so. That that would be a good story, a great story to to.
One of the things about AEDs is that uh, in the wintertime, they 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 have to be in a heated environment. And uh, and um, and for the Granite Lake group, the chapel by the lake, which is in Munsonville Center. Which I sometimes jokingly refer to as metropolitan Munsonville. Um, the uh, the the kitchen of the church is is heated year round. And that church has not been locked for at least one hundred and twenty five years, plus or minus when it was built. So so that is available for uh, um, twenty four, seven, three, three hundred and sixty five. Where whereas the one which we have and the one which Nicoletti has, uh. In the summertime, it is available specifically in in my garden shed with an AED sign on the outside of it. And on Nicoletti's uh, screened in never locked porch. But in the wintertime, it has to be in inside in our locked houses, but both of us are there ninety five percent of the time. But but it's always available in the church, which is a mile from his house and a mile from my house. And and there are far fewer people there in the wintertime as well. Um, so the system appears to work very nicely. And uh, and for the classes, uh, we've had more than a hundred people take the classes in the last decade. But uh, but a half dozen of them have have continued to be certified and taking it. Every every two or three years, and um, many, many had taken it six or seven years ago. And I would honestly question their efficiency in in an emergency situation now, but that's better than nothing.
Sure. It it's certainly something that we need to move towards in the future, and coordinating all of this. Certainly will be a uh, monstrous task to keep it all together and and move forward, so.
I'm sure Suzanne could probably help with some of the grant funding.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But, you know, keeping it going, that that's the thing like Bob was saying of. Yes, you have to recertify, or it's recommended you certify your, recertify CPR training every two years. So keeping that training going is gonna take a coordinator, is gonna take someone that. We continually offer CPR, first aid AED, Stop the Bleed classes, so that we can constantly keep our. County citizens safe and knowledgeable on what to do in an emergency.
Are you suggesting a new position?
I'm not suggesting that at all right now, this is just me.
Yeah.
Putting it out there.
So I presume Stop the Bleed refers to the application of tourniquets and stuff?
Yeah, tourniquet and packing.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we're actually doing a pseudo, one of the things that we're doing is uh, beyond the bell is a camp, fifth and sixth grader, we're putting together. Kind of excited about it, but like a pseudo Stop the Bleed um, first aid class for them. And you know, giving them towards the trucks and things like that, so.
The great age to catch.
Yeah, yeah.
And and uh, yeah.
Yeah, to capture that uh, ability and confidence and.
Oh, yeah, give them some, give them some gore and stuff and.
Yep, love it, love it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, you get them at that age, and they will never forget it, and and and.
We started a program now, what, probably about fifteen years ago, Keen Comes Alive. The Lions Club, you know, said, we need another thing, but we don't want it to be a fundraiser, we want it to be a community civic thing, and so throughout the. Throughout the school year, they learn about, uh, third graders learn about the city, the city of Keen and the history of the city of Keen and. They learn it through music, they learn it through visit and games of the times, certain eras throughout. And then at the end, they bring all the schools together, about two hundred kids, and they um. Have all these actors come in that are community actors, act out Jonathan Daniels, act out Nathan Blake, now they have all these characters. And the kids have learned about them, now they get to see them, meet them, they take a tour of the city during that time and and see where. Somebody was killed by an Indian and all this stuff, and they know more history. About the city of Keen and it sticks with them the rest of their life, and that goes to your point, you get them at this age, they don't forget this stuff, it lives with it. And so that's the same theory, if you have a fifth or sixth graders, that yes, love gore, but also they will remember, remember.
Well, and you know, a lot of times their career choice is a lock. So, yeah, you know, they, they have mannequins that bleed.
We do.
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's a lot easier than cutting your artery. I got so many scars on. They have like, they say, alright, who's the volunteer this week, it's like, no, no, no.
You know how uncomfortable it is being intubated over and over again?
We had a thing this weekend, we had a presentation down at the EMS building, where a guy by the name of Art Whipple. Uh, wanted to come in, thank you, and um, um. There you go, thank you. Um, Art Whipple uh, came in, he is, he's not an EMT. But he has been involved with the Swansea Fire Department, he's an also a um. A janitor or something for the uh, SAU, so it's the warm zone, the the rescue fast horse. And he gave a presentation, and all of a sudden he whips out this pan like he's gonna face a turkey in. And then he puts these these things that look like skin and stuff, that have tubes tied into it, takes out this tube. And he starts pouring this thing into it, and and the blood starts coming out, spurt's on the table. That I can get the spurt too, yeah, you did.
The Saturday Night Live skit with Julia Child.
Dan Aykroyd, that was classic.
Yeah, that one was classic.
Yeah.
Fifteen teenage years, I can say, my first aid merit badge as a boy scout, which. And I got the merit badge probably at the age of thirteen, contributed to my long-term career choice.
I was gonna say the same thing, I got, you know, I was a boy scout, or my first aid merit badge probably weren't the first ones I earned as well. But then I got certified in CPR in eighth grade, and that's continued, obviously, the last. Thirty. Five years, um, of being involved in healthcare and and the like, so. If we can start getting more into the schools at that eighth, ninth grade level, I know. Um, he's not going in in official capacity, but uh, Deputy Chief Kramer. Is, has been asked to go into Keen High for Bring Your Parent to School Day, like Career Day type of thing. And he's gonna talk about what we do in EMS and Stop the Bleed and and stuff like that for their health class, so. The more we can get the kids. Understanding what's going on and getting to see the gore or, you know, and that you can actually save someone's life. The better off this entire area is gonna be.
We're actually gonna bring our.
Yes, we are.
I'm sorry, what?
We have a new mannequin that it tracks the level of CPR, it's a simulated, you can do IVs and fill the veins and.
Yeah, you can push the.
Yeah, and it tells you the depth and the rate.
Yeah, all that stuff is pretty cool.
You can innovate them. Yep, so the kids, we think they may have already had.
So we won't gadget this.
But that'll be a neat hands-on that they probably won't forget once they get into that. So just to wrap up my portion, just in the next month, um, and again, I've only been at this for a couple months, but in, well, now we are in May. We'll have at this point an additional hundred and twenty people trained. On a variety of ones, so it's working.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I I had a question that came up a while ago, do we, do we have like a a standard? Inventory sheet to check the stock in each ambulance? I I'm coming back to the the issue of outdated Narcan and one of the.
Why, yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
I made that my project, we always had one because there's a state requirement of what has to be tracked, obviously. And then we have things additional that we put on the trucks, um, so I've really kind of simplified it. Each, like first in bag, there's pictured first in bag, a list of what needs to go in each bucket, yeah, so drug list, absolutely, dosage, um.
Cause I'll tell you.
Yeah, so every morning, each new shift, the two providers on the truck go through the entire truck, go through all of the lists. There's a checklist on an iPad, they have to submit a checklist, list that anything that's missing or wrong, outdated. Um, I run the supply room, so then they come and knock on the door and go.
It's 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 a lot easier to do that with a full-time department, that struggle with the volunteers is. The only way, frankly, most of the time, the only way the ambulance gets replenished is you pull back in and the. And and the people in the bag of the bus know what they've used.
Yeah.
And maybe they restock it, and maybe they don't, and um. I, so I'm just uh, wondering if there's any documents that we might be able to share with them to help them. Assuming that on a volunteer squad, somebody wants to take the time to actually go down and eyeball and kinda make a checklist.
And I would love, yeah, there's a a great way to organize it all, I would love to, I mean, I'm happy to go sit with them.
I mean, from my experience, from my experience, that's the biggest thing, you you open something up, and they're supposed to be doing something, that's all you want. I mean, from my experience, from my experience, that's the biggest thing, you you open something up and they're supposed to be doing something, that's all you want.
Well, then just a simple med chart of when it expires, so at least somebody is in control of that.
And when it, when it expires, is it, it really expires, it's just a deter- terminated by a drug company or somebody that says this is when it expires? And so do we just throw it out or do we?
It's a lawsuit red flag. We.
I've always wondered, does rat poison expire? Uh, no, you can still take it, you can still take it.
I'm not saying to keep it, but I'm just saying, well, do you throw it out or is there like? We bring it back to the hospital and they have a process that they go through with it.
I can assure you that uh in nursing homes. The last thirty, forty years. The outdated drugs get sent back to the pharmacy, they peel off one day and they add another one and they send it back. Because they don't really, most of the time, they don't, the efficacy doesn't really decline, but. They they redate them and send it back.
One, one thing that we really try to do as best possible is get the expiring medications. Back to the hospital a month or so before, so that they can put it into a more high-use department like the emergency room or ICU.
Yeah.
Or operating room so that the medic- medication can be used before it expires.
Not all drugs can be redated, but a lot.
Yeah.
Because even if their tablet's solid and they've been and they've been bubble packed and so forth. They're they're stable.
That's what I thought.
Not 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 all of that way, but you know. But.
But yes, it's a drug company or manufacturers way of saying, hey, spend more money.
Well, it's it's a fiat of federal regulations requires a date on there anyway.
Yeah.
And so there's not necessarily a line between the date on anything and inside the efficacy or anything else, same with food. Yeah, just.
No, milk, you know, it's bad when it's plumpy. So, all right, um.
That's one indicator.
Yeah, um, and then uh I talked to Chief uh Slusmano the other yesterday. And he uh said that he'd be more than willing to sit with you and go through their list of items that they have.
Yeah.
So that you have a running list of availability of items when you need it. Um, and then, you know, the the great thing about you meeting the chief yesterday, you were in the city of Keen. Covering at least once, maybe twice, in some situations that occurred um yesterday too.
Yeah, they had a, they had a busy afternoon, you know.
They did.
They went A two, A three, roll out on sales.
Yeah.
And of course, they always send a lot of like more excuse engine on them.
The uh, and while you're here, I'm just gonna keep on going because if I'm next anyways, so. Uh, Southwest Mutual Aid tonight has the uh their annual uh dinner, which is out at the Keen Country Club. Which I'm told is not really a dinner, it's brownies, cookies, coffees, and chocolate chip cookies.
That's dinner.
Yeah. And it's at seven o'clock and uh so I'm gonna, I've been asked to go out and just talk about the work we've been doing. In reference to the infrastructure um uh for the uh for Southwest upgrading them. And um so I'll do that, they're expecting anywhere between upwards to two hundred chiefs supposedly.
They usually sold the room.
Yeah, um, and so I'll just go out and talk about that. I know that um Mark and Ed are gonna be going, that's great. And um also, we'll give them an update that currently. Uh, where it stands is we haven't heard from Shaheen yet, but we should probably be hearing soon. If Keen State College is coming out saying that they just been made aware that they received a three million dollar congressional spending request. Then I gotta believe ours, one way or the other, can be told us.
What what do we know for certain as to the mutual aid funding?
What do we know for certain? We know that Custer is out. Uh, we had sent a document to Custer asking for a congressional spending request. The reason she's out is not because they don't want to, they would love to. But the Republican Party who's in control, usually you have the ability to, when you get a congressional spending request. It is slotted into a category, homeland, commerce, whatever it may be, they find a category that it goes into. And then you work with them, USDA, uh we work with them to get the projects, you know, uh get the congressional spending requirements completed. And um and that's not been a problem for us in the past. The it's, but it's usually really wide so that the Congress people can go and say, we place it here, here. They brought it into here, so pretty much the only thing you can go for, because I've uh. Suzanne and I looked at it yesterday is is pretty much if you're looking for police things. Like um radios, chief, we've worked with the chief, I mean, the sheriff. To get about a hundred fifty thousand dollars so that um towns in our community can get the radios. For the infrastructure that we put in at no cost to them.
That's what we did the very first time we set this thing.
Right, but that's going through the Department of Justice, which is one of the criterias that we can go after. And that's the other thing we're finding is that fire services really don't have, it's homeland usually where you land, if anything. But they don't have a Department of Justice type thing that they can go to easily. So um so they they were actually disappointed because they really wanted to find a way, but they just couldn't figure out. How to do it, so Custer's out, Shaheen's still on the table, Chase Hagman, um and who was the deputy director of. Uh, Gopher, uh who's now moved over to um. And uh business economic uh administration, BA, right, that's right. He is now over there, second command there. And so he uh he and I, I had a cell phone, we're just playing phone tag. Because when I talked to the governor, when I went to the medic meeting and I talked to the governor. Uh, Terry was there and I just point blank asked them straight up, you know, we've got this concerned and. And laid it all out to him and he said, well, that, reach out to Commissioner Quinn at Public Safety. And also, so uh and he also said, because at the end of the day, there will be some monies left over. From ARPA that they're gonna look to see what they need to do with, and if we've got a proposal in, that's where we could get the monies too.
Well, if you, if you have, if you arrange a meeting with Quinn, I'm happy to go, cause we're old buddies.
Yeah, Don, Don is actually setting that up because he's really good buddies with him too.
Right.
So we're gonna, we want Buxton there, I've talked to, I talked to also Donovan. And uh and Dan would like to go too, so.
It'd be nice if it could be a not a bipartisan approach, so do you have a Republican Senator or? That you could bring, maybe like Hunt?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Hunt, Hunt would be good.
Yeah, okay, uh I mean, I'm willing to do whatever it takes.
Yeah.
So um so that's, that's, so we're playing that card, but I also wanna make Chase aware of it. Because it's gonna, I know it's gonna end up in his lap, cause he dealt with all this before, so he knows the process. So I just wanted to have that conversation, because this is the same guy that we convinced that that we should do a public safety. Um, and they set aside a three point five million dollars and every county could go after three hundred fifty thousand. We went after one point four million, one point two million, whatever it was. And because we knew every town wasn't, every county wasn't going to go after it, and they gave us the one point two. They, this is the same guy that when they, they set aside the fifty million for nursing homes. We, we had just finished ours, so we didn't qualify. We, we talked, talked to him and he said, well, we'll change the language and they gave us whatever they gave us, what?
So what's, what's the answer to that?
One nine hundred or whatever.
So how how much funding, Mutual Aid Radio, do we have confirmed?
None, zero.
Okay.
And so those are those, that's what I'm looking at. You know, at the end of the day, I've been very honest with the chiefs there, and chief, I will give you effort, that's all we can promise you. And so, uh but I'm focusing on the Hampshire side. But tonight, I'm gonna introduce the Vermont side, because they're gonna have Vermont in the room. I need chiefs over there to be work, to work with us on this. So, it'll be interesting, because I'm guessing other chiefs will be there from Vermont too. So, okay. So nothing, I've got nothing yet.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean like we don't have things in the cooker.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, so that's that one, and then um. And then, can you talk a little bit about the the uh rescue task force training, the guy, what he's thinking about? Or what like this is have happened? So this really spurred the conversation of what the county has or should have. And that was spurred because the Sheriff's Department asked to bring their trail, their command post trailer. Down to the EMS station in Swansea for some dispatcher training. So that's all said, it's gonna arrive on Friday at our uh station, so they can do their training next week. Anytime you get into large-scale incidents, whether it's. The weather event that we had in Swansea and throughout the county last July, or a winter weather event, or. Uh, mass shooting, active shooter aspect, large-scale motor vehicle accidents, bridge collapse. This is where Homeland Security and FEMA came out with their all-hazard approach. And the incident command system, which anyone that works in EMS, you've got your basic uh national incident management system. Uh, seven hundred class, your incident command sys- system, uh one hundred, two hundred. Are your basic understanding on the incident command structure of, I show up on scene as the EMS chief. Or the fire chief arrives, they're incident command, all right? I show up on scene, I would take over EMS command. So I would handle all of the ambulances and resources there. Wh- but what you need, and this is, will include county government as well. You need that unified command, okay, you need representatives from each. Public safety or government office that's involved. Because even finance gets involved at some point, because it all has to be paid for. So knowing what resources you have available is key for those first. Boots on the ground, basically of, if my captain show up at a large MVA that turns into a hazardous material incident. Knowing what to do, and that's where Southwest Mutual Aid comes in on having. Their run card set up on, you know, who to call, who to, who to bring in, follow-on resources. Um, and but already knowing what you have or what you can offer. Whether we can call on the Sheriff's Command Post, um Keen's tech rescue trailer, or their hazmat trailer. Or Southwest MCI trailer. It's all about an expanding incident. Which is how ICS is set up, it, it can start as that single. Provider on scene saying, wow, this is a big incident, I need more help. And you start building it out as you, as you need more and more resources.
Sounds like mates, remember?
Yeah, 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 we, we've had some tabletop.
Yes.
Uh, exercises over the decades. And we actually had a.
Yeah, I mean, obviously this brings in a new kind of view.
Right, and.
And you include public health.
Yeah.
Yeah, stated in Hampshire, they'll come down and.
Yes, they will. And that's what most people don't understand, they think FEMA is the save all on, you know, hurricanes and all that. No, it it starts here, right? It starts with that first person, that first department on on scene. They say, I need help, so it goes to other departments, which they already have mutual aid agreements with. And then it starts expanding all the way out from the local to county. And then to the state, and then when the state says, hey, this is too big for us to handle or fund or whatever. That's when FEMA gets activated and comes in and kinda backfills the gaps. That the local governments or agencies can fill completely.
One of the uh concepts that we were kicking around years ago was. Uh, to have ten county EOCs. And those ten EOCs are basically communicating with the state EOC, rather than the state EOC communicating with two hundred and seventy-six towns. That's kind of layered out a little bit so that the span of control and the interactions are a little more managed locally. And so that the state EOC has.
D O C.
Emergency operation.
Emergency operation, EOC.
Did that like go by the wayside or is it?
Well, I don't know, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't looked at it.
I don't know, but it's certainly something that needs to happen at, in my opinion, at the county level of. Like you said, with the span of control, it's instead of two hundred and fifty-six different. Individual EOCs talking to Concord. You have, was it ten counties?
Ten, yeah.
Wow, got that one right. Like you said, we'll give out a much better span of control.
Yeah.
For Concord with them just reaching out to, if it was a statewide event, ten EOCs. Instead of all of them, so that's something that should be looked at, in my opinion, later on as well. Because it's not, and this is going back to the rescue task force that Art was talking about. It's not if a large-scale event is gonna happen, it's when. Okay, and the more prepared you are, the better chances you have at mitigating a lot of. The concerns or issues that will pop up when that incident does happen.
That's what we uh, we met the other day on, uh it was a good, a good starting point for us to, we know we have to address it on a bigger scale. But uh, and we'll get there, so. All right, thank you, chief, that's.
How we have with staff.
Yeah, that is good. In fact, we are denying overtime, you know, it's a beautiful thing.
Yay.
Don't get her emotional down there.
And uh.
Smiling.
I like it when Charles smiles, makes my life that much easier.
And do we have any run data?
Run data, I don't have that with me, Jack, I'm sorry. Well, I do kind of, and this will probably make Cheryl a little bit happier.
Well, the only, the only reason.
But when we can actually like start getting to. Better ideas on things, so. So far. Our intercepts are actually up, at least in the last month and really the first quarter of the year. Um, we've been doing an awful lot in Troy, Fitzwilliam. Because from my understanding, staffing in Ringe, Jaffrey area isn't as solid as they would like it to be. Um, so through mutual aid agreements, Fitzwilliam Troy has been responding into Ringe a bit more. And we've actually intercepted with, on two occasions. Intercepted with Fitzwilliam Troy as part of our contract with them. But the calls actually initiated Ringe, so.
Which is important.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Chris was happy when I told him that yesterday.
Well, I, I think we can help out.
For, yeah, exactly, and that's all I really care about is that we're staffing to what this county needs, not. Uh, what we think it should be, and it's starting to show more and more, but.
Well, we, we used to get some data, that's all.
Yes, and.
We don't.
Right, the data I was bringing today was the community aspect, the. Full EMS updating, um, but. As of. Yesterday, so the first third of the year, we're anticipating about forty-three thousand dollars in intercept. Reimbursements from the calls that we have done since January one.
That we can actually build.
Yes, that's Mark's number based on the six hundred, two hundred.
So that's what he's extrapolating for a projection for the year.
No, that's just for.
Year-to-date.
Year-to-date.
Wow.
Yeah.
So.
Based on, based on our actual intercept tran- transports.
And not the cancel on team, if that's still a.
But that's even, that's only a few hundred, maybe a thousand dollars. That would come off, so I think our projections, if we do continue this route, which some services don't. Cancel us or we ride it in anyway.
So there's been about seventy-two intercepts?
Thereabouts, yeah, we're up.
Okay.
From what you projected in the budget, and if this continues, again, these are very, very rough numbers. But if this continues in summertime, we refer to as trauma time. Because people are out, they're doing a lot more stupid things that cause them injuries.
Waiting, waiting all year to get in shape.
Yes, or.
Flatters.
Starting to ride dirt bikes over very large man-made hills for fun.
Yeah.
Um, we could see a substantial increase in our projected. Numbers for an incident.
Who, who has, who? Who actually? Who, who actually, who, who actually does the bills for that? Do you guys do that, or is that?
Yeah, so it is, basically what has happened is. Finance started, so we do them, there is a, a, a cloud system that has been created that. Um, Mark Kramer uploads at least the date. But there's one for each town that we, we haven't, well, we haven't had an intercept relationship with necessarily contract, that's some of the problem too. Is, we basically had to draw a line in the sand because no one was returning that intercept contract. So as of February twenty twenty four, we're billing, because.
Regardless.
Yeah, because I've been saying, where are these things? So we, they, this folder shows us. The, the calls, and if it was canceled on scene, because we came up with this two hundred dollar charge, or if it's canceled on scene. Um, it will say COS, so that's simply all that we have to do is, um. Bill, go into the town, find the number of calls, if they doesn't say COS, you get to bill it six hundred, and it says COS, bill it two hundred. And we send them out, and so for the month of February and March, that we marked this down as well. Was about seven thousand eight hundred dollars worth of billing, and. Immediately, there's been pushback because they're like, wait a minute, we didn't know anything about this two hundred dollars canceled on scene, and.
Is it all collectible?
So the six hundred dollar fee, all the towns know about for an intercept. The pushback that I'm getting from the chiefs, certainly about the two hundred dollars, and. I, I, the ones that have reached out to either Cheryl and then directed towards me. At least has been able to start the conversation, because that's one of the. Big roadblocks that I'm running into is, I reach out to these chiefs. And I get nothing back, reach out again, nothing. So the communication there is not as well established as I want it to be. So at least this two hundred dollar fee has sparked some conversations of like, what is this? And I go, it's very simple, we're coming from Swansea. You're in. Because it's not an intercept town.
Wherever.
I'll say starter. You're on scene for a solid ten fifteen minutes before we're arriving, right, no matter how slow your response may be. You have time to assess your patient and determine if you need a paramedic or not. If you cancel us before we arrive on scene. No arm, no foul, we return in service, you know, call us back if you need us. But if we arrive on scene and get the, no, I arrived to intercept and walk hole with you, Jack, and you say, oh, hey, Chad, sorry. Don't need you, okay, I have no patient contact, I turn around and leave, that's a two hundred dollar fee.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's starting to get these conversations rolling again.
And, and that's language that's included in the contracts that they're not reading or returning.
It was supposed to be in a letter, and we kind of lost track of where that went. But the six hundred dollars is in the contracts that they all understand. So that will be receivable, billable and received.
Yeah, so like, for instance, like Winchester, which is kind of really interesting. They, they got this bill that had a couple canceled on scenes, and they're like, wait a minute, um. We had a verbal conversation, and I was there, Chris was there, this was back in like. I don't know, summer of last year, where we met with Chief Kellum and Felicia, who's in EMT, EMT, paramedic, I mentioned. Um, and. There was paperwork presented, but now recognizing I didn't have it in my hand, it may have just been. The next cloud agreement that allowed them access to this. Um, but they were supposed to get approval from their selectmen to enter into this intercept. Um, agreement with us, and we never heard back from them, I mean, it was one of those pushes that we kept. Previously with my, uh, Chief Spain, and say, have you heard anything back, and answer was no, 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 no. And then. We started introducing new intercept agreements to all of them that I think have the two hundred dollars in, Don Bliss from. MRI was assisting with that, and still we are not getting any of them back, so that's when we finally said we're sending them out. So when we sent them out, and then we're getting challenged by the chief of, we, there was, what is this two hundred dollars? We didn't have any agreement about this two hundred dollars, I said, and he reflected on this verbal, I said, well, I. I recall being there, but, um, but interestingly enough, we only started billing you in February. And we've been providing the intercepts all this time, so then no problem not getting billed at all.
Right.
Right through January, but then all of a sudden we send a bill with a cancel on scene, and. And then he said that they didn't budget for it, well, it's like, well, then where did the money go that he budgeted that we hadn't billed you for that allowed? Six months.
And that's the whole point of the next cloud agreement is, it's giving a, it's giving the towns. Or whoever does the billing for that town's ambulance. Access to our paramedic calls, so they can actually bill the insurance for, on that patient at a higher level, and then give us.
Assuming that they executed the agreement.
Correct.
If they have an executive agreement, they can't get reimbursed, we can bill them.
Right.
They can't get reimbursed, that's, that's where they're not.
And then.
They ought to understand.
Question on, you know. How are these towns billing? And.
Are they, yeah.
Or else they are.
Well, somehow. If they're, if they're submitting for reimbursement, they have to certify. If they're submitting for reimbursement, they have to certify they have a paramedic agreement, an intercept agreement.
And I have sent, because there was a change in the bill, CQI person for Fitzwilliam and Troy. Uh, I believe it went to Nancy Carney. I reached out to her, I've reached out to her, I've sent her both the contract. For the intercepts and the next cloud agreement. I get credits.
Well, just bill and hold it to it.
Yeah.
Except I do notice that there are still COS if you need aid, both for Winchester and I, I, was that, I mean, there were a couple.
That was.
Feel that we have to at least stay with the agreement as recognized. And then the.
The Alstead one, I believe they paid, because.
Or is it wall pole, there's somebody that said that they didn't have anything about this.
Wall pole, and that was my fault, I gave, uh, Chief Hogan the wrong contract. When he brought it to the fire commissioners, or commission, or fire district, I'm sorry. Uh, so that's my, my bad, we are, we're going to try to renegotiate and haven't understood. More, and they're right, it's. If they're canceling us, and they cancel us on scene and we charge them the two hundred dollars. Like I've told both chiefs, I'm like, you have plenty of time to cancel us. You know, there's plenty of ways to cancel us, and I even had this conversation with Alstead ambulance chief. You have plenty of time, and you're already saying that you're not gonna sign a contract with us, that's fine, guess what, you still need us. You're still using our services. Because you think your three paramedics are gonna be able to cover you all the time, fine, I get that, but. Expect to bill when we do intercept with your crews.
Absolutely.
So.
You know, at the end of the day, uh, and, and obviously, this is gonna take a little more time for it to sink in. We provide this service twenty four seven, somebody's gotta pay for it, and you gotta pay for it whether you use it or not.
Right.
And so they have to get over it.
They did.
If they don't sign a contract, then I don't know what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
Because at some point. And, uh, but it's not free. I mean, you know, with the eighty percent cancellation pattern, uh, and hundred percent coverage. Uh, there needs, I think there needs to be probably either rolled into the general. Ambulance service agreement or a separate intercept subscription. The base charge to recognize that if they never use us. We're still ready twenty four seven, and we're burning through a hundred thousand plus dollars a year to have. A medic available twenty four seven, and that somebody's gotta pay for that.
I think that's where we need to start changing the process with this given something that the communities, all of them have to. Recognize a certain burden of the, through the taxes, uh, the standby, and. And except.
That their remedy.
Everybody else.
Yeah, their, their remedy frankly, is to petition the delegation to roll this into the taxable base. And that you distribute it, and nobody has to worry about.
Yeah, the primaries pay more because they have something completely different.
Yeah.
The intercepts as well, they pay, and then there is just a.
Right, and, and, and this is where, this is where, you know, I know, I keep talking about this, and you keep hearing about it. We need to. We need to give them a heads up as to what the real costs are gonna be at renewal, kind of next year, when our federal money goes up.
Jack, I, you, you segue beautifully to, but I'm not gonna do it right now, but I have a whole speech ready for you. Cause you know. We've got a lot of work, while you were away, we did a lot of work.
Cause we, they've gotta know what's coming, and they've gotta know. By, before the end of summer, so that they, because when they go into their budget season, and they get ready for the winter.
But, but here's the reality, what you said earlier. What they're gonna be paying and what we still need to do are two different things that we can talk about.
Anyhow.
Yeah.
You know.
And again. Going out to the communities and letting them know about the legislation that's in Concord about ambulance reimbursements. And being able to bill for non-transports, because like, that's a lot of our calls.
Right.
We go on a cardiac arrest, we spend a lot of money, time and effort, and that resource is out of service during that time. And probably extended afterwards, because they have to go and restock certain items. Yeah, we need the insurance companies, alright, to, to pony up, so. Get Anthem and Harvard and the rest of them to be like, look. This is the cost of doing business.
We have to continue to put the, we can need to continue to put the pressure on those, all of them, from Medicaid, Medicare, CMS. To Anthem, all those, we need to put pressure on them, but the answer, I don't believe is, is, is that. I mean, it's, if we, we have to. I know.
Or a lot of services that are provided are not billed, so, I mean, not to.
I mean, the non-billing, I mean, the, the non-transport, we have to see if we have, what we, what we can get out of that and, and get some level of money, I get that. But I still say that, at the end of the day, we have to figure this out too.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know.
Sure.
And we need to know what the burden is in reality, because if I'm hearing right, I'm hearing other agencies out there that aren't under our care. Or other towns that aren't under our care are struggling. And don't know if they're gonna, you know, those services are gonna continue, if that happens though. You know, we need to, that's another burden, that is added money, yes, but it's also, uh, another burden level. That we need to figure out what that means to us at the end of the day, and can we currently continue to do that? Does it also speed up that we have to look at putting ambulances in different places to be closer, because we're widening our. Our spectrum of air, you know, our area coverage, you know, catchment area. I don't know, it's, it's, it's evolving every single day. And, and I think people need to understand that, and. Spending multiple hours sitting in Concord, listening to people talk. I came away believing that they'll give us little wins here and there. But they are not gonna give us the bigger things that we truly need, at least not initially, unless. We develop this continual presence like others have for years and years, like the insurance companies. Have been there for years and years, and actually. Help support people that run for certain offices, which is not against the law.
No.
But, and so they, 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 they're beholden to them, so, I mean, I don't know. I, I think it's all the above that we have to do, and we can't forget that, at the end of the day. It's, we're evolving, so what we initially said, our hope was, is maybe not a reality, and what we have to do moving forward is educate everybody about how we can move forward.
I, I have a question about, um, the non-transport billing legislation, and maybe I should just read it, it's, um. Would this just be Medicaid, I mean, can the state have any?
Yes.
They, they, obviously, they can't tell Medicare to do anything.
Correct.
Can, and they probably can't even tell insurance, well, I couldn't.
From my understanding is, once Medicare or Medicaid, and the, this would be coming from the federal level.
So this.
So if you have federal monies, if I remember the committee hearing.
Would be ma, I mean, most of what the state.
If, if Medicaid pays for non-transport, then, then.
Then the other insurance companies follow suit.
Oh, but because the Medicaid program is a state program, remember, if you've seen one state Medicaid program, you've seen. One state, because they're all different, so the, 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 the specific legislation in New Hampshire would allow for Medicaid payment. For non-transport, but it's just, no, no, because they don't, you don't have that legislative reason.
They probably get, they get the matching dollars to the federal government, because that's the way our Medicaid works, but it did not change. Where, you know, the predominant, I mean, one of the biggest, uh, insurance is, is Medicare. Medicare, so Medicare is the. Um, is your over sixty five.
Yes.
You.
Disabled.
Disabled.
Yeah.
And that's their primary insurance. Medicaid is, you have to be.
Poor.
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 And then you're covered, but it's not to say that that's not probably a lot of the calls as well, is that, is Medicaid coverage, so this would. Um, cause for Medicaid to at least be built, I found actually something, uh, uh, some billing company where. It does say, does Medicare cover the ambulance if I'm not transporting, it says no, but it says limited exception.
Yeah.
Medicare may pay whenever a beneficiary is pronounced dead after the ambulance is dispatched. But prior to the transport, we begin, so.
That covers this, that covers the, the CPR stuff.
Yeah, so I don't know if you've got any of those that.
Well, I, I know the conversation, and all we do, um, I know the conversation I had with EMAC about that. Uh, a month or two ago was. The problem, it's not so much billing, it's one, if you don't get. Paid. How do you go after a state or do you send it to collection? Because it has to be uniform across the board for all your patients, so if I transport Chris. He doesn't pay his bill. Cheryl sends him to collections at some point, or the billing company sends him to collections. I go to, you know, and take care of Davis, and we don't transport him. We bill the insurance, the insurance says no, but now unfortunately, Davis, I'm sorry, you're dead. Do we go after it as a state?
I think it's great, yes, and but it. Collection company.
Yeah.
The collection company is probably the one that will go into the estate, but that's still better than not.
Guidelines for us to do that.
Yeah, the, the process frankly is no different, because the bills that go to a debt person. Have to be listed on the probate.
Yeah, they have to be paid.
And so when the court appoints an executor. Or an administrator, assuming there's something to probate. Their legal obligation is to present and advertise in the paper and so forth, listing all the debts of the decedent. There's a priority that of payment, uh, based on that, so the billing is no different.
Except, but I don't know that EMAC goes to that extent, I don't think they provide the services where they are gonna sit there and start calling probate and finding out.
No, no, they wouldn't need to.
Yeah, this secondary collection company.
Yeah.
I feel would, and that's where they would step in, because I know that even, um, with Coastal, there's some that just stopped because the. The person that passed away, so.
The problem to me, I think, is it's a behavioral issue with the billing company, they don't want it. Because they're used to not billing for non-transports and people who don't make it to the hospital. But every probate estate. Rounds up the debts of the decedent. In a very ordinary way, using the same billing processes that have always been used, where it's Verizon, suburban propane. Banks, liens, whatever. Uh, it's no different, it's no different, but.
Okay.
Right, it's, it's just helpful internally. To keep track of those people, and there's not that many of them, but, you know, that could be a dozen a year, I suppose, I don't.
Yeah.
Um, and so we just know that, and so. Um. You know, you, you. You can keep track of it like every other debtor does, trying to collect money from a state. Actors member probate case is open for a year or more, so there's enough time to jump on board and. And let the executor or the administrator know, hey. That person owes us some money.
Okay.
Uh. I just only know that from my prior life, but. Both, both as an attorney and as an, and as an executor, so it's, it's not rocket science by any means, so. It's, it's not rocket science by any means, so. Uh.
Well, thank you all for your time this morning.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
All coming together.
Oh, yeah. Um, next Wednesday. I just give you guys an alert, I don't know the time yet, but it, but it looks like next Wednesday, um, is when we have Concord. Uh, for uh Quinn, Commissioner Quinn, oh.
So, how is that gonna, how's with our one o'clock?
Yeah, I know, so I just kinda, let me, let me tell him, stay away from, stay away from.
Who was Quinn?
Bob Quinn is the Commissioner of Safety. He used to be a major of the state police, he was the Assistant Commissioner. And, and I worked with him, I worked with Peggy, and then, and when Bartholomew is retired, then Quinn stepped up to be the Commissioner of Safety.
So next Wednesday, or they come here?
That would be the eighth.
We, we don't have the time yet or any.
I have a one o'clock.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, I, I thought he was asking about Quinn.
And what's the purpose of that meeting?
The Quinn meeting?
Yeah.
Um.
No, I'm just saying, that's what, um, um, it's the, it's the infrastructure money that we're talking about mutually.
Well, we can always move the meeting to the hospital.
Don't wanna do that, so I just sent that.
We could at least move.
I just said, just, I just sent him, and said, I got a one, one P M, that's the most important thing. Anything else I have? That's it?
No, it's just, that's the. Nothing else that I know you'd have to, like, community awareness and.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be, Quinn would be in Concord, Hospital would be here, so if we could do Quinn in the morning, come back. That's great, if we could do Quinn in the afternoon after the meeting, because it's, they give you, if Hospital gives you an hour.
That's it, yeah.
It's an, adds an hour, it's boom, and so we'd be out of there too, we could be there by three fifty.
So Concord needs to be at nine, ten, or eleven at the latest, and then at three.
Yeah, or at three fifty.
Yeah.
So, alright.
Um, and then actually next, next Wednesday, Keen Family YMCA Summit.
Early, early morning.
Jam, yeah, that, that's all you have.
That's seven thirty, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The uh.
We're coming back from Colorado Tuesday evening, and I will be going to the YMCA thing.
See you there.
Yes, okay, um, having to leave, and is the meeting next week at the DOC or is it here?
It's at the DOC, pushed back a bit, but maybe.
Yeah, it works, yeah, we're, we're gonna wait and see, it's all, everything's in, up in the air.
Okay, the one thing is that it would be pushed back no matter what, right, you wanted nine thirty for next week?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's either at nine thirty next week or canceled.
Just because that seven thirty thing, I just wanted us to have enough time to. Okay.
Is there coffee now?
Oh yeah, there has been, yeah.
He just misses us, Rod just misses us.
Yep, something like that. Who's the, who's the young guy with the beard? I don't recognize him.
It's a, it's, we call him the lumberjack.
So is his name Paul Onion and he's got a blue ox or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, just not here today.
Yeah. So I, I left, left your message, Davis, when I have a chance, just uh, give me a buzz, would you please?
Oh sure, yeah, yeah.
Hey, uh, with, with, you, yeah, we have that, the contract since around here, eighty-six West Street contract. It's, I know, I, I get it, I'll find it, I haven't looked for it yet, so I'll find it. You know what I'm talking about, eighty-six West Street.
Davis, didn't I give you a copy of that?
Uh, what, sorry, I'm not, I'm.
The eighty-six West Street contract for connected families with the insurance company?
Not that I know off the top of my head here, would it have been over email?
Uh, probably, yes. I just heard, I just heard last night that the, uh, the building, MGM building is on the market.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
We, it's, it's saved, it's saved in your files, Sunday Jane Commissioner shared, signed December twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two.
I thought so, yeah, yeah.
It's all in there.
Okay. But let me just go back to the deceased. Ambulance billing, it's the easiest money to collect. Once you're on the probate list of debts of estate, you basically gotta be paid.
Or nobody else does.
Yeah, I mean, he might, he might get a percentage depending on what the.
No.
Well, if there's not enough money in the estate.
Well, that would be, that little, that would be the only reason.
Exactly, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, so it's, it is the easiest private billing you'll see. If there's money there, they simply have to pay. And if there isn't, then you know it, because you can see the probate form, you know exactly how much money there is, you can see, I can see all the debts.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, and you, and, and you then get on the mailing list a- as a debtor, or as a creditor. For everything that comes out, so, it's, it's really, it's not difficult at all.
Are you looking for my department to do this, or, I mean, I would expect that this collection company would tag on to this. We don't have enough detail of what's going on in these calls to even.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, it.
Trace down, you don't have the detailed billing information that they. Um, I can't say E-Max, if they would provide it to us, I know Coastal, then we.
Yeah.
Really, um, so.
It, it may be something separate, cause actually, honestly, it, it isn't even something that we need to go to the collection agencies.
Well, I, I guess I can reach out to E-Max to find out what level of they do, and if they don't do any. If we can come up with some agreement that they're providing us the information so that we can then.
Yeah.
Uh, make a claim and probate, cause it, honestly, I mean, we do it all the time, I mean, it's a bit different, but. We have to do it for the nursing home.
Sure.
And so it's a different form, because it's a nursing home administrator.
Right.
Um, but I. You know, and it might be having to reach out to a lawyer, I mean, cause I know like when my mother-in-law passed away, there was a lawyer that collected all that.
You, the, the court actually kind of requires an attorney to be overseeing the executor of, of an estate. Because.
The executor themselves are the one that gathers the information internally.
Right, right, so it's, yeah, okay, anyway, moving on.
Alright, moving on, um, well, Cheryl, Davis, Kim and I met this week. Um, in reference to uh DEI or diversity, equity and inclusion. It's something that's out there that um, we wanna actually form a committee of staff. To talk about issues in Cheshire County, we have five hundred employees that bring all different type of. Issues uh or beliefs or.
I thought, I thought we helped a lot there.
Oh, that's a lot, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's. Um, and so we wanna start having a conversation, I don't pretend that, you know, the, uh, understand. The, 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 the issues, uh, but I wanna explore it, and I'm talking with my colleagues. Um, no one else is doing this, so they're all like, yeah, Chris, go ahead, Jesse.
What kind of, kind of issues, personally?
Um, well, are we supporting, and are we supporting every employee that comes through? Our doors in a way that supports their needs and, and, and values on certain things, um. So I've reached out to Abbott Topher with Keen Pride, I've reached out to uh Dan Smith, who run, uh, heads up a. A community-based group that's looking at a lot of these issues, um, I know that um. Davis is gonna be reaching out to, um.
So you're talking about things that are beyond.
Mm-hmm.
Legal requirements of employer.
Oh yeah, there's, there's no mandates, it's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, I. And there may be some things that, when we look at our policy and our handbook, that we may wanna think about changing, or may not be at all. I don't know, I wanna explore it and understand it, I know this is a topic throughout many municipalities, but especially in school districts. Where they're really talking about this a lot and, and some of the issues that are coming through the door and how to best address that. And so I know Kim's gonna reach out to Primex. Um, to see if they're, you know, how they're handling it, I've reached out to Kate Foggan to see if there's issues. Um, uh, if there's anybody, anybody that they may know up there, or if they wanna put this on topic for. The uh conference this fall up there too, and so. Yeah, and that's.
They go, because of the expand, expanded role of counties across the country, I'm sure that there's. Some county.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, model, uh, programs for that.
Yeah, so it's just a start of a conversation, that's it, but I wanna make you aware of it. Uh, as we move forward, but what we've said, we sent out, Kim sent out to. Uh, department heads that were looking for employees, it doesn't have to be the department, it can be employees that may have, um. Uh, a, a want or a passion to be on this committee, to come together and let us start exploring how to move forward. I don't have a clear agenda because I don't want to have a clear agenda, I want the group as a whole to see how we move forward and, and trust the issues, that's it.
You, you know. Obviously, we don't have. Significant minorities, right? But if we actually move towards. An organized, robust program of legal. Workers, foreign workers. We may have to grow some sensitivity around.
Mm-hmm.
Cultural and diversity issues.
But in reality, but in reality, we are probably one of the employers that has the most. Opportunity, but at, at the nursing home, we have a lot of travelers coming in from all over the country. We have, um, we have a Department of Correction, they not have employees. Uh, that expanded, uh, different ethnicities, but, but they have individuals coming into their care. So on the flip side, do we educate, you know, do we give education around thoughts around, you know, and insight into as best we can. Those situations too, I don't know, I, I don't know.
Did, did Dottie over at Keen State, uh.
Well, that's who.
The one I'm reaching out to.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and so we're.
She's only, she's, she's busy with the Gaza thing right now.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Is it people at Keen State actually doing that?
Now, there were only about thirty of them, but, um. She's, she's, she's being, I guess, pressured to. Keep track of things.
Mm-hmm.
And make sure, I don't know if she's been told to hand it down, but.
Probably, yeah.
Well, it's, because it's, it's a sensitive issue because of, uh, because of the Cohen Center and. And all that, because they, 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 there's a lot, um. There's discussion about why the Cohen Center hasn't made any statements and blah, 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 and stuff like that. It's a small minority of people down there.
Yeah, sure.
Causing trouble. Well, Keen State has turned to. Keep it manageable.
Mm-hmm.
Keep their head down.
Well, graduation's this weekend, right?
Probably, right.
Yeah, yeah. So, and don't plan on putting your seed in your fertilizer, because it always rains on the weekend at graduation.
Every time.
Yeah, but I will say, I did hear this morning that they were saying that they think that the, the weather might be transitioning to be a decent day for Saturday, but. It sounds like it must be a bit iffy.
Maybe, maybe, maybe we're getting all the rain now, but that's how I always used to track, when's Keen State go? Alright, that's, that's when I put all the rain down, so, uh, that's what we're doing there, um. We are trying to work extremely hard, Davis has gone back and forth with the state of New Hampshire. Setting up meetings for the refugees, me, uh, meetings with the state officials, um, we're still working on that.
Ball is in their court right now.
Yeah.
Uh, they have to get back to me on the time it works.
Yeah, and you know, the other thing is, if they don't get back to you by the end of the day today, maybe you can have Rick pressure them a little bit.
That probably be for the best.
Yeah, because, uh, uh, he, he said that he would be, do whatever he could to help us.
Yeah, I think I'll pick him up on that one for, it's been a while.
Okay, the other thing is, is, uh, uh, it looks like Suzanne's going to be running a second, uh, this will be her third class. Grant writing class, um, and she's looking to.
Oh, such a good, say she's running her third marathon.
No, she's having surgery in the fall. And so. So, uh, so that, and that's, we'll have sixteen individuals, whether it's from towns, nonprofits. Uh, to be able to come in, yeah.
Is that full yet or not?
Not yet, so if you know people that, I mean, she hasn't put it out the ever she's going to, and it's gonna start in about three weeks, and it's six weeks long. Course.
How many people's, will she do in a class?
Sixteen.
Inside her match?
Yeah. Yeah.
Also, there's not that many yet.
Yeah, no. She has a waiting list, so she just wants, she's gonna check the waiting lists and see if those people still open them, so. So I think that's good, it makes us stronger to give monies coming over to this region.
Is Keen taking advantage of that? I understand that they're looking for. Grant management.
Right. Good, it should, I mean, I.
Back for years.
Yeah. Um, then there's the, uh, just to keep you on. I like to keep us active when it comes to the opiate funding, um, you know, we will be receiving a check for about sixteen thousand dollars. We have about a hundred and sixty-six thousand in there currently. I would like to see if there's some outside agencies that would benefit from, you know, like we did last year. We have to report out on a yearly basis what we're doing with this money, and my thing is, is that. We might as well use it, if we've got it, and so, um, I'll look at one or two agencies that do what we did similar to last year. Um, and I'll reach out, I know that P O C has their own.
Can we, uh, use it to offset some of our own EMS costs?
I was just gonna say, Sarah was talking about some program.
All the N R K and stuff and training and.
So the answer would be yes, but not if it's being offset by a grant, and that's where it gets a little fuzzy.
Yeah.
The things they get, but certainly, um, we're, in this year's budget alone. Uh, so that would have to go before, obviously, in August too, um, but there's sixty-six thousand dollars offsetting internal things. Um, sixteen for training at the, um, Sheriff's Department.
Yeah.
Thirty thousand to offset the, um, sub-locks and costs at the jail, their budget.
Right.
And another twenty thousand for, um, drug court. Um, whether it's outside agencies, but I think it's also supporting some of her internal.
It's, 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 it's through her.
Yeah.
And it's helped to offset for housing, it's helped to offset for incentives.
Yeah.
And programming like that, and then we did give reality check this past year, twenty thousand, and Keen Serenity Center, twenty thousand.
Yeah. But, yeah.
Keen Serenity came back to us and said, the program down on Carpenter Street would be, uh, and I can't remember what the name is there. But they, they said that they, they run all the classes for N A, A A, everything down there. They do a great job, and that was, that was Keen Serenity Center saying that, and then, uh, there was, there was another. Mm-hmm, and then there was another one too, so, just gotta figure out what that was, but we'll come back to you with some ideas. Uh, Catherine is away for the, this is the first of two weeks, so.
You can take your order.
Yep, yep, seeing her son and enjoying.
Who's running the show?
Um.
Sabrina?
Yeah.
All right.
No, so not Sabrina, um.
Rob.
Robin.
Oh, Robin, of course, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Sabrina's probably over there too, um, but it's, it's, uh.
So is, is. Is Sabrina officially in an A I T role?
Yes, yeah.
And administrator.
Yes, and Bruce, Bruce Harrison retired last week, it was, uh, it was a nice, I, we ended up, he. He didn't want anything big, so the day before they had cake upstairs for him, and then. Um, that was Wednesday last week, and then on Thursday, Catherine and Damon. Bruce and his wife and Carrie and I went to the stage and had dinner, that's what he wanted, and that's what we did. We had a good time, I went up there on Friday. Um, and, no, Thursday, I went up there on Thursday and met Aaron, who's gonna be coming in and taking office, taking on his role. And had a.
Who's Aaron? Uh, he worked with us already.
Aaron, yeah, he started last week.
Yeah. Yeah, he had the, what we, what the, what, uh, Bruce called hell week, because he would have, he would work with Bruce during the day. And when Bruce left, then he'd go to Catherine to get more insight, because Catherine was, you know, Bruce was retiring, Catherine was going on vacation for two weeks. So I said, yeah, well, at least I'll have two weeks to go.
And so what's his name?
Aaron. Aaron, and I can't, I, I, I'm just blanking.
Oh no, I've already said.
Been the long-term chef from the DOC.
Karen Newman.
Thank you.
Newman.
Oh, that's right, that's right, because when I, when he said that, I said, I said to Bruce, oh, Newman, and he's, he's like, yeah.
And where does he come from?
He comes from, um, he comes from the school district, running, uh, this, being the director of. Running uh this being the director of facilities for a school district up in uh Plain Plainville.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Plainville and he but he was also over to Cornish, Cornish Plainville, right there. So that's where he came from.
Oh, good. And and who retired at dietary?
Don.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, Don.
Oh, I thought you said somebody Maplewood.
No, maybe not, yeah.
Okay, DOC.
Yeah. So. So uh, that's that and um and I think the only other thing is if you guys, I don't need an idea today, but. If you have any thoughts that you didn't want to think about for the annual report for dedication this year. That's fine. We'll put that into the bag of books and go from there. You know, one of the things that we did some for some years is we reached out to department heads or I. Just looked at certain people and just said, you know, these people should be recognized. And then the the department head then would write something up and then they'd come in. In August, when we had the meeting and read it, and then we give them some flowers and the in the annual report where it's written in. So we can do and we can do anything we want. I mean, there's been all kinds of different things that you all have done in the past. I think you even did a tree.
Did a tree. I did the big uh. Oak tree or what? Yeah, I don't know. I don't think it was oak.
No.
That's Allison's. The largest diameter tree, blah 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 blah. And then the falling winter. Destroyed by icy stone.
There you go. Yeah, exit, don't. All right, Jeff, no, but Jeff, do not give his, take his recommendation.
You know, we could think about, you know, putting Jack crack on the on the list.
Mm-hmm.
Today.
Well, we could even, when did he pass? Twenty twenty four?
Just this right, just a couple of months ago.
Okay, so.
He has his uh memorial.
So he might be one to recognize next year.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay, but this.
We have a.
Suggestion. Lisa Modi, who was um, she works in dietary. She's a special lead. She's been a lot of Special Olympics and stuff like that. She just celebrated her thirty anniversary working with us.
Wow.
And she's been very dedicated.
Oh, she's a character. I love her.
Yeah, I do too.
I've known her, so she's about this big.
I took a suggestion. I mean, because of, I mean, I know there's other people who do a lot of longevity, however. She's just, she's just been very dedicated. She's had a lot of wins at Special Olympics and.
Oh, wow, yeah.
I think that's a great idea, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Well, but we've already.
Oh, you've already decided?
No, 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 it haven't. It shouldn't ever. We already published it.
No.
Twenty-three annual report.
No, usually on the last one with the audit, the audit lady.
No, that won't happen until June, July.
Well, that's past the date by which it's supposed to be ready.
Yeah, I believe it is.
This is an outrage.
We can't talk.
I just want to get that out of it.
Again, and then we, you know, then we send it out. We have like fifty copies still left.
Yeah.
And it used to be that we had a lot more. We still had a lot more. Rod's on the call. He knows. He uh, we used to get like a hundred and fifty to. You know, five hundred bucks and it was like, what do you do with them all? Burn them?
They go to the local libraries and.
And nobody was taking them.
No, town offices and local libraries. Well, the only place they're gonna reside for any.
Even they're gonna sit.
Yeah, I mean, in the case somebody wants to look up something.
Well, seems to me we're supposed to send them to their towns.
Mm-hmm.
So there's 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 a couple of them. But uh, and the state used to bind them up. There's there is still a statute.
Yeah.
That says the state's gonna bind them up, just like over there, county reports.
Yeah.
They haven't done that yet.
Yeah.
It is their own history.
I think it's important. I just think we need to be realizing that. It's just not utilized at the level that it used to be. This used to be how people really, I mean, it was like reading a book.
Right.
For them. So.
Well, here's the thing. You could produce fifty of them. Because you can always print more.
Right.
In a in about a week and a half, you call up the printing thing, give me another fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
No big deal.
Well, and that's what we do now. That's what I mean. We we I think we did. We order fifty and that's it. And it's, you know, if we have to go to second printing. What's going on?
But but.
They're so hot right now. They're so off the rack.
Not not that it matters, but from a historical point of view, the Sentinel Printing Company has printed them for centuries.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like a part of the history. If you look back at the earliest books back there.
Do they still do it?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, they do.
Yes.
You know, that's interesting because that might be a good. A good little piece to have in the Sentinel too. That's that's great.
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
But you look, if you pull one of those, you could actually reprint. That page or something and, you know, they might use it for their own purposes. How long they've been around.
Well, they're celebrating two hundred hmm. Something, is it two hundred?
Seventy ninety-nine. So it's so that'd be sort of be two twenty-five or.
Yeah, yeah.
They're doing something that that's a great idea.
Yeah, we I I told them a long time ago, I I think we're probably their their oldest regular customer.
I think Chris, you have a dog on there, raising a name.
Hi, Doug.
Hey, hey, it worked. Pretty cool. Raised my hand. Um. If you're gonna cover this in a future report, no problem, but a couple topics of discussion. Recently, do you have any updates on? The fleet maintenance plan or and or the extension of the union contract by one year?
Fleet maintenance, we're meeting again with him at the end of May or so now. Um. So that's next.
Yeah. And the extension of the contract in. What is it that you're asking? Is that there's really nothing happening because it's an extension, right?
Well, has that been agreed to, done, done deal?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Yeah. I think that's what I signed this morning.
Give it to me.
Yes.
What's the matter? I'm sorry.
I said, isn't that what I signed this morning?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Been emailed over and she has acknowledged receipt.
All right, so we're good. Okay, that's all I have. Um. If I look at. The is there any old business? Any new business? Send agenda both to accept the weekly manifest and minutes of April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. So. All right, Commissioner Wasmac, Commissioner England and Commissioner Clark, thank you. Um, any changes to the calendar that we need to be aware, made aware of?
Nothing except for, well, actually, um, towards the end of the month, we're moving our Maplewood meeting, um, but we can talk about that next time.
Oh, do do does county have anything to do with the northern borders um um timber resources grant? Like a nine hundred thousand dollar grant to Southwest Regional Planting Commission is talking about this after.
Um.
Now, if you don't know anything about it.
I don't either.
All right, let's just one.
The uh Primex Conference.
Yes.
Oh. Is May fifteenth.
Yep.
All likelihood, I won't be here for that.
We're not. We're all gonna be. We're all gonna be. Yeah, that meeting's already been been canceled.
We could actually. We probably should actually post. That that's where we'll be meeting because there will be a majority of all over.
Um, which.
And if we, well, if we need.
We've done that before.
We we need to do any county business. We should post it. We should make a note on the calendar.
Yep.
And one year, one, yeah, one year we had to have a a meeting. Uh, at a county conference that we were at and up in North Conway and we just, they got us a room. We held a meeting and went from there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, even if you don't meet it. We'll leave it in case you have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and the fact is, we're. Yeah, we we probably just need to know.
We can do that.
Yeah.
And then um, and the other thing is that that Wednesday is when they are going to be dedicating the sheriff's um thing, that fifteen. Um, so and I told him that we're gonna be over at the conference, but he. It is uh law enforcement week, so he really wants to dedicate it that week.
That's right down.
Yeah, I said, well, you know, I asked him if we could do it.
Sort of in between.
Yeah, the two flags. Right?
What's that?
It's between the two flags.
I think so.
Yes.
It's okay for him for us to not be here.
Yeah, he's aware of it. Yeah, and I said that we could, if he moved it to Monday or Tuesday. You know, we could possibly make it, you know.
I think we can let him.
Said invitations already went out.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
So.
Not that it matters, but. I feel like it's a little helping if we're all or we're meeting the April July fourth or not, but.
Usually we usually we don't. That's just. Because a lot of people are away on vacation and uh or doing something with Dana.
The Primax Conference, did you get my email that I'll be I'll be driving over on Wednesday morning?
Yes, yeah, and I'll send you your schedules today.
We do have a non-public se- uh session, non-public session, pointing to our say ninety-one dash equal three. Two D consideration of acquisition, sale, lease of a real or personal property, which is discussed in public would likely. Benefit a party of parties whose interests are in terms of those uh general. And motion moved.
Yes.
Yeah.
Chris, sorry.
Yeah.
Are we gonna try to work out a date for the annual semi-annual inspection? While you're on the calendar.
Yeah, the uh Davis and I are gonna talk about it after the meeting and we'll get back to you on it. All right. All right.
All right, yep.
Um.
All right.
I don't wanna be difficult, but I've got vacations trying to plan and.
Uh, yeah.
Like to get it in the books, um, you know, so let me let me know what you.
Yeah, we just have to determine what what's canceled.
But what Davis was gonna do, he was gonna reach out to you, just find out what date would work for you, and then we were gonna just nail down that it means we switch. Uh, meeting is here up there to make it work. That's what we were gonna do, but we just weren't.
It's probably gonna have to unless you want to do one in August and then again in November, which probably doesn't make sense.
No, you you just date, Doug, you just pick the date.
Yeah.
And uh we'll do it because I don't want to.
Yeah.
I don't want to get past the six-month point.
I won't, so.
No, we just have to work um. Uh, middle of June doesn't work, middle of July doesn't work.
Yeah, for.
Um. Because of in in June or in DC, so.
Right.
Doug, I'll I'll email you after this with the ones that we are open for and then just.
Doing still in May, right?
Sounds, yeah, sounds good.
Well, all right, we can't do anything this this month.
Well, we we can. It would just be moved around and it would be.
It's it's.
And we already moved, we already moved it once, so we can move it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to start meeting twice a week. Well, you know, we could, we could have a separate, just a jail inspection for a couple hours.